Okay, Kathy, is everyone here that needs to be here?
I believe so.
Okay, great. So it's nine o'clock and I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 19th, 2022 Board of County Commissioners, Wasco County Commissioners Meeting. So I'll call the meeting to order. First up, are there any more corrections to the agenda? We have had a lot of corrections and I do want to thank everyone for being so flexible thus far and moving with us with this flowing agenda. So staff, commissioners, are there more corrections?
What I need to note is that we are asking to pull the hazardous waste search app from the agenda and move it forward to a future time. And also just want to acknowledge that we published a new agenda yesterday. All of the same items are still on there. They're just in a different order.
Thank you. And again, thank you to everyone that really flexed their schedules to make this work today, hopefully. And so commissioners, any changes to the agenda for you guys?
None here.
None from Steve. Okay, thank you. Well, it looks like Public Health is here to give us our COVID update. We have Martha McInnis and Shelley Campbell, it looks like. So who will be started? Martha?
Good morning, everyone. Kathy, sorry, I am the last minute add-in. So am I doing the slides or are you doing the slides?
Yeah, I had emailed you back. I've made you co-host and you can present. Great.
Martha, why don't you introduce yourself and your title while you're doing that?
Thank you for that prompt. I'm Martha McInnis and I'm a registered nurse with the Public Health District and I am the clinical program supervisor.
Excellent. Thank you. And Dr. McDonald was not able to join us today, I understand.
Correct.
Yeah.
Kathy, it says that the host disabled participant screen sharing.
Well, I certainly didn't do it on purpose. So I will just share. Can everybody see that? Okay.
Yes, we can. You might want to do more of a slideshow view if possible.
Well, that's what I thought I was doing. Let's try again.
Sorry. Much better. Thank you.
So since the last Board of County Commissioners meeting, I think that there have been some significant changes in sort of the requirements for case investigation and contact tracing for COVID. Basically, we don't have to do that anymore for individual cases. So we are still reporting cases and we still want entities to report positive cases to us for case counts as best we can. However, the counts have gone up so significantly that there is literally no way we can keep up. So that is the latest update on that. We're really focusing on outbreaks. And as you can, oh, not quite done yet. And we have outbreaks in pretty much all of the local long-term care facilities at this point. So the slides that I'm going to show, as far as case counts, are definitely an undercount. There are a lot of at-home tests being done right now. And while we recommend that people call in and to the Public Health Department with positive cases, if they test at home, a lot of people will not do that. And so this is definitely a low count. Next slide, Kathy. Okay, so this is the number of COVID cases in the US. And you can see it is quite a bit higher than anything we've ever seen before. And next slide, for the state of Oregon. You can see that our trend pretty much follows the national trend, almost, you know, almost to a T. And our cases have spiked dramatically. We don't know when our peak is going to be. I don't, we don't believe we've hit it yet. And I don't know if anyone follows the OHA emails that come out daily. I do. And was quite stunned to see that over the three-day holiday weekend, we had 28,000 and change cases, which is the most I've ever seen. So it's a lot. Omicron is definitely running roughshod over our state. And next slide. So you can see cases specifically in Wasco and Hood River County have consistently trended upward. So the biggest things, you know, case counts at this point, I don't want to say they're irrelevant. I mean, it's important to get as accurate a count as we can. However, getting an exact count isn't going to be the most helpful thing. We just need to continue to try and push the layered kind of prevention strategies of masking, physical distancing that we all know, and getting booster shots. Hospitals are definitely under some strain. As you can see from the graph, the next slide actually I think is more telling. So in Region 6 hospital capacity, we have two ICU beds open and two non-ICU beds open. That's not a lot. So that's, MCMC locally is definitely experiencing a strain, particularly with staffing. So as far as testing, and I'm sure you've all heard this on the news, there is a national shortage of tests. There is a big push right now to get home test kits in the hands of everyone possible. Right now, we are having to prioritize testing those with, you know, we're doing the best we can to test as many people as possible. But we are definitely experiencing a shortage of the Binax Now rapid test kits that we get. So we are continuing to test daily. Our schedule is more than full every day and we squeeze as many people in as we can. So we have started handing out home test kits as well. We have two sources for home test kits that we're getting here at the Public Health Department. Sarah Chambers and One Community Health, they're part of our HERSA grant. And they are getting, I think it was 25 million home test kits that are being distributed across the country. And so Sarah has been sharing some of those tests with us. We've gotten about 670 home test kits within the last week and we've handed out all of them. And each test kit has two tests in it. So the state is also going to be distributing 5,220 test kits to our health district. So for Wasco Sherman and Gillum County. And so we will hopefully start to receive those next week and can start distributing those to the three counties as well. And right now, yesterday, the federal government launched a website through the US Postal Service where you can put in your name, your address, and they will ship four home test kits to you. So spread that around widely and encourage everyone to sign up and get their home test kits. I think that it's a really good idea to have home test kits on hand so that you, if you get the sniffles or a fever, you're not going out and looking for a test kit or going out and having to, you know, get tested. You can test in your home. OHA has even actually put out recommendations saying, if you're sick, don't worry about going to get a test, just assume you're positive and stay home for five days, which is the current recommendation, and then wear a well-fitting mask everywhere you go for the following five days. So, and as far as vaccines and boosters, while we have increased capacity and have quite a lot of capacity and ability to provide boosters, the public is not coming. Oh, thank you, Commissioner Higgy, for putting that up on the chat. We are ranked at this moment, Wasco County, about 28th out of 36 counties. Only 37% of eligible people have gotten their booster shots. So we have the capacity to vaccinate up to 1,000 people per week. And we are just not noticing the people coming. So we're trying to brainstorm right now, the best way to get information out when everyone is on information overload. I do think that much of the public doesn't realize either that they're eligible for a booster or that a booster is going to be effective. Boosters are very effective at keeping people out of the hospital and keeping them from dying, even with Omicron. And so it may not stop you from getting sick, but it will prevent hospitalization. And we really need to do that now to support our hospitals and the healthcare staff. So as much as you can, please encourage anyone that you know to get their booster. If you haven't taken the time to get your booster, come and walk into our clinic Thursdays, 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the readiness center. There's my last plug. Take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Martha. It's an excellent report. I wish it was a little better news. But looks like we're in the thick of things right now. So how about we move to Shelley and then we'll go to questions. Good morning, Shelley. Did you have a report for us as well?
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. I was just going to be present to give an update on the tent situation. I can give that now unless we want to pause for questions.
You know, why don't we go ahead and pause for questions for Martha, our expert here on COVID? So I'll start with our commissioners. Did you have some questions for Martha? Looks like Scott raised his hand first. So go, Scott.
All right. Thanks, Martha. Appreciate the information. Just, I have a couple, so what I'm, I'm just kind of going to reiterate a couple of things I hear out there. So related to like Omicron, is that how you say it? It seems like there's some people that have a sense that, you know, it's just kind of not a big deal and it's a full flu and it's not like the other earlier coronaviruses. What's the reality from your perspective? And what would you tell people that kind of, for example, don't want to get a booster, don't want to get, or don't want to do anything and just think like, yeah, everybody's going to get it. What's the big deal?
Yeah, I, you know, I confess, I think that fatigue has hit so many people that even I have sat here and thought to myself, I give up, I'm not going to wear a mask, I'm just going to get the damn virus, pardon me, and just get it over with. The reality is, and when I come to my senses, when I'm not so frustrated, is that the number of cases, while the number of people getting hospitalized and dying from Omicron, it may be smaller in general, it is so transmissible. People get it so easily that the number of people that get Omicron is so exponentially higher that even though the numbers may be smaller, those numbers are still enormous and going to overload the hospitals because of how many people are getting it. And so whatever we can do to, you know, to minimize that is essential. Our healthcare system truly is in crisis. It's not just here in Wasco County, it's nationally. Everyone is short-staffed. The healthcare staff are tired. They are so tired. And so we need to support them and try to stay out of the hospital as much as possible. And so that's what I would say, I would implore people, even if you're young, and I would say, especially if you're young, you know, the people in their 40s, 30s, 40s, they're actually, the hospitalization rates are quite high for those folks that are unvaccinated. And so, so everyone who can get their booster can decrease that transmission and potentially decrease the intensity of the illness and stay out of the hospital. That is the most important message.
Okay. And it sounds like that it is possible to actually die from this variant. Yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
So the percent, okay. What about, just thinking about boosters real quickly? So I've heard a lot of people say they're having strong reactions, like not good reactions to the boosters. What's happening there and how can you make people feel better about getting a booster?
Yeah. So what I would say is, it's a couple of days of discomfort potentially and feeling kind of under the weather. But it means that your immune system is really working to build up immunity. And it will, again, it will keep you out of the hospital. So I do think that's the most important message. And all of the symptoms and side effects that people are having from the booster are typical. It's what we expect. So you can have some body aches, you can have a mild fever, you can feel, you know, tired. So because you've had two shots before, you do have some of those antibodies, quite a few of those antibodies still in your system. And so when you get that booster shot, your body is already primed. And so it's common to have more symptoms of building that immunity. And so I would say it's worth a day or two of discomfort, again, to prevent yourself from going into the hospital or potentially dying from this.
So after you get a booster and you have those symptoms, does that mean you have to stay away from work?
No, no, absolutely not. I mean, your work may have rules about, you know, if you have a fever, you can't come in. And every workplace is different in that way. But if you have a booster and the next day you feel a little under the weather, you have some body aches, it's very likely due to your booster shot and not due to COVID. I can't say that for sure at 100%. So it may cause people to have to be out of work for a day. So timing the booster shot appropriately for whatever the work schedule is, is a good idea.
Okay, thanks. Quick question, or final question on masks. So a lot of discussion about masks, changing of mask recommendations, etc. What can you tell us about what we should and shouldn't do? For example, everybody seems to be wearing KN95 masks. And then I see a lot of things about, a lot of these KN95 masks are basically just fake KN95 masks and are not working well. How, what, how do we find it? And one of my bigger questions is like the surgical mask, how do you know if that is like surgical grade or some sort of grade? Are they all the same? Or we looking for something in a box?
So that's a really good question. And I'm not sure I'm going to be able to fully answer because, because I don't know exactly what you need to look for on the box to make sure that it's a valid mask. And, and yes, I have heard all the reports of on Amazon, if you purchase KN95s, they may or may not be, you know, accurate. And I don't have a great formula. I don't have a specific place to go. I have gone to the New York Times, for example, Wirecutter, they do a lot of product testing. And they had a list of places that were reputable to get KN95s, but of course, they're all sold out. So I think that do the best you can to get it from a reputable source. If the most important thing about masks is that they fit you well, that you're not wearing them down here, that they're not gaping in the sides, so all the air is just blowing out. If you can find an N95 or a KN95 or a KF94, I think is the other, any of those, they typically will filter more viral particles than just a surgical mask and just a cloth mask. However, if you don't have access to those masks, you can use a plain surgical mask and put a cloth mask over the top that helps provide a better fit, helps close up gaps here and here, which are the typical places where the masks gap for people. Soon, actually, and I don't know if anybody has heard this on the national news as well, the federal government is going to start dispensing N95 masks to the public at pharmacies. So you will be able to go to pharmacies and get an N95 mask, not a KN95 mask, but an actual N95 mask at no cost. I don't know when that's going to launch, but when it does, we'll disseminate that information. So I know I didn't really answer your question because I think that it's really hard to know at this point. It would be great if there was a consumer site that would help discern, you know, which companies are reputable and which aren't. But I don't know of any at this point. So, oh, somebody just posted something.
Thank you for that. That's all I had, Kathy.
Yeah, thank you. It looks like Kelly posted a, perhaps a site that the public could use to further that mask information. Okay, Commissioner Kramer, did you have any questions for Martha at this time?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. No, thank you for the update today. As always, stay connected because the changes are happening on a daily basis again. And, you know, follow the guidelines that we've been given today and stay safe out there, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Martha, I do have a couple of questions. Can we assume that what's happening here with contact tracing not happening is happening all over the state? Is that, is that true? Yeah. So that's really what is going on, not just here, but everywhere. How about our schools? Have there been outbreaks in the schools yet?
As far as I know, Kathy, there have not been large outbreaks in any of the schools. I would have to, I will have to get back to you to answer that solidly because I haven't been involved closely in the outbreaks. So I will find that out and I'll put it in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Because I think our students have only been back for a week, I think, or less than. And so because of the holidays and the weather, certainly we're seeing, you know, huge problems in Portland. And I think we would be really, really lucky if we escaped those problems here. So probably more to come on that.
So in the chat, Shannon Hansel said they have 43 people quarantined at the high school and kindergarten is out at Colonel Wright. So I know that there were last week, 31 kids quarantined at Dry Hollow as well. But again, not a lot of this is in-school transmission. A lot of this is out of school, outside-school transmission. And that's pretty important to note.
Yeah, probably the most important thing is when our kids can't go to school. And, you know, yeah. So, and I guess I just wanted to say that I actually got on that USPS website this morning. Super easy to order those tests. I couldn't believe it. I was expecting to be logjammed on the computer for an hour, but it was super easy. Now, we'll see if that, you know, if they come through on the back end. But supposedly, we're supposed to get those delivered in our mailbox at the end of this month. So we'll see. So yeah, it was super, super easy. So, and I think that's all that I had. Oh, just one more question, Martha. You mentioned testing, at-home testing. And you mentioned you should test when maybe you start having symptoms. Are there other times that maybe one should consider using one of those tests, like if you're going to gather with unvaccinated children, for instance, or if you're maybe going to visit your loved one at long-term care? There's other reasons to use it, correct?
There are other reasons to use it. Right now, I would say we are in a really significant shortage of tests. And so use your tests wisely. There are not enough tests for you to screen yourself every time you're going to go visit someone or congregate. And it never should substitute for continuing to wear a mask. So we saw in, there was some data in Europe around the holidays, when they would have holiday gatherings, everyone would test prior to going into the gathering. They would all test negative. They wouldn't wear masks inside. And there was COVID transmission because it can literally change that fast. You can be not infectious at one moment and within the next hour, the viral load has increased enough that you are infectious. And so, again, I think that it's more important right now with the shortage of tests to test yourself if you have symptoms or if you've been exposed and you feel you need to know. And save it for, you know, save the screening tests. Unless you have a whole box full at home randomly, then yes, you could screen before you went to visit anyone that could be at high risk, vaccinated or not. But don't, don't lose the other mitigation strategies. Continue to mask, continue to distance, and all of those things.
Excellent recommendations. Thank you. Let's move on to Shelley. And then we'll open it up to the public to ask questions of these wonderful people. So go ahead, Shelley. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Shelley Campbell, I'm the director here at North Central Public Health District. And a couple, the last Board of County Commissioners meetings, we came and had talked about the Oregon Emergency Management Tent that we had secured to house some of our homeless individuals that were testing positive with COVID. And one of the requests that we had had was to move the tent from where it was, had currently been placed at the Discovery Center in closer to town on county or city property so that we would have easier access, safer access and ability for the individuals that were using the tent and the staff and volunteers that were supporting those that were placed in the tent. So a lot of conversations took place, a lot of work on a lot of people's time and energy trying to move the tent and find a suitable solution either on county or city property. Unfortunately, we could not find a viable solution at that point. We did, however, work with the support from Matthew Pleves at the county. So thank you, Matthew, to have conversation with PUD. And they had offered a solution to have the tent put on their property or at a piece of property across from their place of business that was open. And it could fit our needs or fill the needs of the tent. After much discussion again and conversation about the tent with stakeholders, community partners, PUD, us, insurance, state, anyone you can pretty much think of was involved in the conversation, we really did come to the conclusion that for public health, we were unable to facilitate and maintain the use of the tent for a number of reasons. One was cost of insurance. Two primarily came down to safety of the individuals and safety of the staff because we were unable to monitor or support the individuals 24 hours a day and found out, you know, it's just not a public health process to maintain a shelter for 24/7. And we do not have the staff training to support people who were in the tent. There were some mental health issues around that that were concerning and people coming and going. And so ultimately, we asked the state to come and remove the tent entirely at that point when they came on last Monday. I can't remember now, sorry. When they did come and remove the tent, unfortunately, the generator that supported the tent had been removed by someone, was stolen, which was another concern, certainly. But the tent had complete, the state had complete liability over the tent and everything with that. So we did take the, some of the, all the sleeping bags from the tent, had them re-sanitized, and we provided those to the warming shelter. Our options are in our backup plan. Our options are in our backup plan for this very short-term solution, we had hoped, was to then provide sleeping bags and tents to individuals that were unable to be moved into another shelter area, whether it be the Shiloh or the warming shelter due to their issues that would not allow them to quarantine in an area that they were unable to comply with the rules in. So with that, we are working with, again, the shelter and the Shiloh Inn to continue to house individuals that are houseless or need a place to stay, whether their houses are not. We quarantine people that are unable to maybe even stay in their own home for different reasons. So that is our quarantine and isolation process right now. We will continue to work with our community partners and the coalition that's working on a housing solution for houseless community members. And we really do and will be a part of that process and hopefully that long-term solution. We know it's a very complex issue. And unfortunately, short-term, this just really shined a light on the challenges in our community to provide services and house people who don't have housing. So a bigger issue beyond just our short-term solution of getting the tent. Unfortunately, it was the right thing to do at the right moment. It just showed us that there are some other long-term needs that as a community, we hope we can work to find a solution with.
Thank you, Shelley. I think well said. The right solution at the right time for a very challenging situation. So thank you for all the efforts. Quickly, commissioners, do you have any questions for Shelley? Okay, we are running a little bit behind schedule and we've got to get moving on to the next agenda item on time. So I would encourage, if the public has questions of either Martha or Shelley, to go ahead, you don't mind if they call you directly, right? With your questions, I'm sorry, we kind of ran out of time to open this up right at this moment in time. So do give them a call. What's the number, Shelley?
They can reach us at five four one five zero six twenty-six hundred. I will put it in the chat as well.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. And thank you very much for being here. Really, really appreciate it. Okay. Okay, so good morning again. At this time, we're going to move to a planning commission, commission appeal. This is my first one, so bear with me. I hope I did it all correctly here. I have a lot of things to read, so bear with me. It'll, it'll take a moment or two. And so here we go. So right now, I am going to open the hearing. We will now open the Board of Commissioners quasi-judicial appeal hearing on Agenda Item nine-two-one dash one-nine dash zero-zero-zero-one-nine-three dash PLNG, a National Scenic Area Request Decided Upon by the Planning Commission for the Following: A new dwelling and structures to support the proposed farm use of raising approximately thirteen goats. Specifically, this request includes, one, a new single-family dwelling, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine square foot footprint, fifty-foot long, forty-foot wide by twenty-four feet high. Accessory buildings, one thousand five hundred square foot footprint, fifty-foot long by forty by twenty-four. Agriculture structures, approximately five thousand of four-foot-high wire mesh fence, six-foot fence posts, enclosing three areas on either side of the driveway for livestock pens. Approximately nine hundred feet of movable electric fence to protect a wetland and a fifty-foot diameter movable round pen. And a retroactive review of an unlawfully placed well to serve the residential use and a new twelve-foot-long by twelve-foot-wide by twelve-foot-high wellhouse with one thousand gallon water cistern and driveway. The property involved is described as map and tax lot, Township Two North, Range eleven east, Section eleven, Tax Lot twenty-two-hundred. The tax account identification number three-two-seven. The criteria for approval of the land use decision includes the following chapters within the National Scenic Area Land Use and Development Ordinance for Wasco County, otherwise NSA LUDO. Chapter two, Development Approval Procedures, Section two-point-one-five-zero, Appeal from Decision of the Director. Chapter three, Basic Provisions, Section three-point-one-three-zero. A two, Small-Scale Agricultural Zone, GMA only. Chapter four, Supplemental Provisions, Section four-point-zero-four-zero, Off-Street Parking. Chapter eleven, Fire Safety Standards, and Chapter fourteen, Scenic Area Review. The proposed development must comply with applicable provisions contained in the management plan for the Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Area. Generally, unless otherwise noted, if a request is found to be consistent with the NSA LUDO, it is considered consistent with the management plan. This will be a de novo hearing conducted as a new hearing before the public. New evidence or testimony will be accepted to fully and fairly address significant procedural or substantive issues raised. Okay, so the procedure I would like to follow is, A, Disclosure of Interest, Ex parte Contact or Potential Conflicts. B, Reading of the Rules of Evidence. Planning Department staff will present their report. The appellant will then have the opportunity to testify. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. Those who wish to speak in opposition of the proposal, those who wish to speak in favor of the proposal, questions by commissioners of staff proponent or opponent, close the hearing and, and record and in record and begin deliberation, only commissioners or staff. Disclosure of Interest, Ex parte Contact or Potential Conflict. Does any commissioner wish to disqualify themselves for any personal or financial interest in this matter?
No.
No.
And Chair says no. Does any commissioner wish to report any significant ex parte or pre-hearing contacts? And no for the Chair. Okay, Commissioner, Disclosure of Site Visit. For the record, have any commissioners conducted a site visit to the subject property?
No.
Nope, not in person.
And neither have I. Okay. Anyone can speak for or against the proposal today. However, only those who have quotation "party" status will be able to appeal a decision reached by this commission. If you want party status, please say so at the beginning of your testimony. And a party is defined in Section one-point-zero-nine-zero as, A, the applicant and all owners or contract purchasers of record as shown in the files of the Wasco County Assessors Office of the property which is the subject of the application. B, all property owners of record as provided in A above within the notification area as described in Table two-dash-one of the property which is the subject of the application. C, a citizen advisory group pursuant to the Citizen Involvement Program approved pursuant to ORS one-nine-seven dot one-six-zero. Any affected unit of local government or public district or state or federal agency. Any other person or his representative who is specifically personally or adversely affected in the subject matter as determined by the approving authority. And in ORS one-nine-seven dot eight-three-zero-seven-B as B, persons who appeared before the local government special district or state agency orally or in writing. At this time, do I ask if somebody wants party status?
Yes, Commissioner.
What did you say, Daniel?
This is Daniel, Senior Planner. Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. So if you want party status, please say so at the beginning of your testimony. Okay. So I can move on, right, Daniel?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. The rules of evidence are as follows. No person shall present irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious testimony or evidence. Evidence received shall be of quality that reasonable persons rely upon in the conduct of their daily affairs. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria applicable to the subject hearing or to criteria that the party believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity may preclude raising it before the Land Use Board of Appeals. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow Wasco County to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I'd like to ask the staff to present their report.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners, everyone else. Daniel Doherty, Senior Planner. Before I begin, I want to correct the record. Section one of the Chair's script, I want to correct the criteria for approval of the land use decision. It's Chapter two, Development Approval Procedures, Section two-point-one-six-zero, Review of a Decision of the Planning Commission. I believe it currently says Section two-point-one-five-zero, Review of a Director's Decision.
So it's two-point-one-six-zero, did you say?
Yes, Chair. Okay, yesterday, staff received a formal request from the appellant, Joe Zernicky, to continue the hearing until a suitable date because of a major surgery. And I'm going to go ahead and read the formal letter into the record. Open quote, "Mr. Doherty, I am formally requesting a continuance of the currently scheduled appeal hearing regarding the Lopez property in Moser, Oregon. My husband, Joseph Zernigie, is recovering from major surgery which occurred on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two at the Mayo Clinic in Rochester, Minnesota. He is unable to adequately present his case at this time. I thank you for your willingness to consider this request, sincerely, Janine Zernigie," end quote.
Okay. So is that all you have? Has the staff reported this time? Okay.
I do have the staff report prepared, Chair. I have my script prepared.
Okay. Well, it looks like, as a board, as we read in the packet, we have some options here at this point in time. Option, one option is to stop all proceedings and continue the matter to a date and time. We can allow for the staff to give their presentation, but defer the testimony to the next date. We could allow the staff to give their presentation and allow for some testimony. Or we can deny their request for a continuance and proceed. So Commissioners, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that, under the circumstances, I think a couple of weeks of, for continuance would, would work, but I wouldn't want to put it off any longer. It appears that this issue's been going on for quite some time. I think it's time we get it settled. So Commissioner, thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would have no problems for what, what Commissioner Kramer said.
Yeah, I would agree. Would either of you like to, do we need a motion to continue the hearing? I believe we do.
Madam Chair, I will so move for a continuance and reschedule for our next available Board of County Commission meeting.
Second the motion.
Okay, and I believe that would be February second, and it's preliminarily scheduled for nine-thirty AM. Can I add that to your motion, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. That's acceptable. Thank you.
And I'll continue the second.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. I believe that is the conclusion of the hearing. So just to state clearly that this, this hearing will be continued on February second at approximately nine-thirty AM.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners.
Are we good? Kelly? Kathy?
We're good.
All right, I saw an ad from Kelly. All right. And we will do wish Mr. Zionidde SPD recovery. Okay. All right, next thing on the agenda, it looks like we have a report from U.S.A. And I see Debbie. Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning. Yeah, this, this is, ended up being more of an update. We had hoped to have two agreements in place, and they weren't ready in the timely fashion for the commissioners to, to be able to look it over. So I can just update you quickly. One of those is a gambling prevention grant, or actually a contract. Mid-Columbia Center for Living has been the, through OHA, is the contractor for those funds. They've been doing that for quite some time. And Al Barton reached out to myself and as well as the people that do my position in Hood River and Sherman Counties to see if we could pick up that part of gambling prevention and treatment. And it fits perfectly into our upstream prevention wheelhouse as I think you guys have been pretty good students of what we try and do here at U.S.A. That understanding that addiction, whether it's behavioral or of a substance, really is the same disease. And so the same tools, strategies that we use with our substance use prevention and other behavior preventions will fit right in line with that. So we'll be, with your guys' approval, picking up that service. There are funds that come with it, and so I believe Kathy will have the agreement. It has been reviewed by legal, and so we'll have that to you for your official approval or disapproval as far as moving forward on that. Another one that, the, as you guys know, I represent Wasco County on the Four Rivers Early Learning Hub. I stepped out of that for a moment and actually, U.S.A. applied for some funds. They had some through the Oregon Parent Network. Our region had the opportunity to apply for some funds. This was something that kind of came up at the last minute. So I apologize for not getting the blessing to go after them. It's not a huge amount. It's twenty thousand dollars. We will, Four Rivers Early Learning Hub, Krista Root and Shira are, I would, what's your name, Sabansky, are working on that contract. And again, that'll be twenty thousand dollars. And the role we will play on that is convening a new evidence-based program called Parent Cafes. And it fits really nicely into what we're doing here at U.S.A. We have our parent boost camps that we offer. And this gives us an opportunity to have kind of more of a continued outreach. People, parents, or anyone that partakes in our trainings have that chance to continually connect. And the, the big emphasis behind the parent cafes is, is for individuals in Spanish, and this will be, we'll both have parent cafes in Spanish and in English, have the opportunity to become more lead, more of a leader within their own communities and start to lead these groups as opposed to it always being, you know, myself or trainer. But we, we help our community, give them resources and the technology to continue to connect and build within. So that's another, we're excited to be able to do that work. And again, it dovetails really nicely into what we're doing right now. So we're not having to look at, oh, we need to hire additional staff or administrative support. It really supports what we're doing right now. We had looked at going out for some federal grants, but I think we're going to stay the course to find out what happens with the behavioral health resource networks. We've been involved in that, those conversations. And I think we've, Youth Think with the county support, we've been kind of taking that role with the opioid or the overdose prevention grant that we have the Oregon Health Authority that we do in conjunction with North Central. So we feel like let's, instead of going just chasing money, we want to really make sure we have our systems in place. And we're, we're making it work with what we have here. And if those funds are available in the future, that'll be great. We'll be more prepared to go after them. But we feel like we have, we have the capacity. And we need to, to really, I think, be effective with what we have now before we just start chasing more money. So that's kind of why we took a backseat. When we first asked for this meeting, we were going to discuss that, and they were several hundred thousand dollars. So we're going to work within our own system. I've got Molly on here now. Molly, I don't know if you have anything to add, or again, if the Commissioners have any questions on that update.
Thanks Debbie. Commissioners, any questions of Debbie? No? Molly, did you want to add anything?
Nope, I'm, I'm sure Debbie covered it. I have total confidence that she did. And the last pieces that I heard were spot on with what we had discussed. So thank you.
Perfect. Well, thank you Debbie for the work that you do. We really, really appreciate you.
We, Youth Think really appreciates the, the support from the county. We love being a part of Wasco County. So thank you.
All right, thank you for joining us. Okay, looks like we're just on time for our transit development plan. And Kate, I really want to thank you for being flexible today and moving that schedule forward for us. Thank you so much. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thanks so much. I'm going to share my screen here. So, let's see here. I am here today to talk about the Wasco County Transit Development Plan. Can everybody see my screen? Okay?
Yes, they can. It's, it's.
Excellent. So this is a transit plan for Wasco County and the Link Public Transit. I have quite a few slides, so I'm going to try to speak quickly. I know you do have the packet. So if we don't get through them all, then you know, we can, you can follow up with me if you have any questions, if you don't get through anything. And feel free to just jump in if you have a question, since I'm going to try to move through this huge amount of information. Okay, so a few things, I want to give you just a very brief overview of what the project is, since this is really the first time that we're bringing this to you. Talk about where we're at right now, which is the future services opportunity, and then some next steps. So this slide is an overview of kind of the whole project as a whole for the plan. We started off this past summer with some existing conditions on the ground here in the DOWs. You know, what does our ridership look like? What's the data behind it? How is it being used? We did some needs analysis, which included not just, you know, looking under the hood here at the Link in terms of our ride data and our budgets and all of that. But also we did some online surveys to the community to get feedback. And we also did ridership surveys onboard the bus. So capturing people who are using the system as well to get their feedback. The transit supportive development was our consultants looking at the various kind of comprehensive plans of all the communities that we serve throughout Wasco County and seeing what that looks like in terms of supporting transit service. Right now, what I'm talking to you today is about this kind of Task Three Evaluation of Future Service Opportunities, which is really focused on ways to adapt the current service that we have to improve it, and also some future opportunities to meet the needs that were identified earlier in these plans. And then right now, we're just starting to get to this Transit Goals Policies and Service Design. That's looking at, again, comprehensive plan policies, transportation policies, other goals and things that we could do to kind of better enable transit-oriented development, transit supportive development, all of those things. Then we'll be moving into a draft Transit Development Plan in early spring, and then hopefully adoption of the plan in later spring. So we're kind of at this midpoint in four on the downhill slope toward finishing the plan. So there'll be more to come. So today, for the future services opportunity presentation, we're going to do a very brief kind of, that, that memo has a need summary, some information about those future services, some evaluation of how we're thinking about what those opportunities that our consultants have put together, how we think about what direction we want to go and evaluate each of those opportunities, different funding scenarios, and then kind of recommendations based on a fiscally constrained and unconstrained recommendation. And I should note that we do have a website for our Transit Development Plan that does have all of the memos to date, including this one, that are sort of all of the information behind these presentations. So for today, I'm just going to talk us through a few different routing opportunities that we're considering. They fall into kind of two buckets. One is updates to our existing routes here in the DOWs in Wasco County, and then some of them are creation of new routes. So for all of these routes, you know, one thing that we've come upon over and over again is that we really need to support, you know, no matter where we place these transit routes, they need to be supported with more stop amenities and walking and biking facilities. So really safe access to get to the transit routes, no matter where we locate them. So this first slide is showing kind of existing access to our transit maps. And this map is showing, the shading is about our ons and offs. So what we did is we kind of dove into our scheduling software and looked at all of the scheduled rides that we have had over a two-year period, and looked at the density of where people are getting on and off of our buses. And that's the shading. There's also all those dots that you can see. Those are rides. And then it's overlaid on our blue and red routes with our existing bus stops. And then little circles showing you what the kind of quarter mile walking distance. So it's, it's meant to capture really how, how many of those ons and off rides are within a quarter mile of the existing bus stops? And are we serving them? And you can kind of see that a lot of them fall between those circles and are, one of the reasons why we have so many deviations on our routes and so many dialer rides, rather than people kind of using the system, you know, walking to a bus stop and getting on and off the system as a traditional bus route might. So knowing that and using that data to help kind of sculpt some of our recommendations, let's jump into some of the updates to our existing routes. And so, you know, one of the first and biggest recommendations that we saw is that we really need to add a lot more stops to our existing route. That if we were able to add more bus stops, you know, more people would be able to walk to and from and a stop without needing to call in and request a specific pickup and drop off kind of off of our routes. And so this first recommendation is just showing a significant increase in the stops. And again, those, on all of these slides, those diamonds are, are bus stops. And those shaded circles show the coverage of a quarter mile walk to it. So it's kind of showing you the coverage of accessibility to a bus stop. And this next one, we're adding both bus stops, and we're also adding a clockwise version of the blue line. So currently, all of, both of our loops operate just in a counterclockwise routing. And the issue with that is that it means, because we only operate in one direction, that a person who is, you know, going to the Mid-Columbia Medical Center but gone on it, maybe the community, well, that's my example. So let's say they're, yeah, but they're going to the community college. So that is a good example. Right now, they're having to traverse the entire loop in order to kind of get back to that last stop. And so it ends up being a lot of added direction travel. So one of the recommendations is saying that we have these loops operating in both directions so that a rider can kind of go directly in the direction that they're headed, rather than having to, you know, spend a lot of time sitting on a loop that's out of direction for them. Another way to get at that issue is converting our current loop to more of a figure eight. And what that would allow you to do is have kind of that midpoint where you could get on basically in the direction you're going, and it would just kind of limit the amount. So maybe you get on further down the loop, and it's not the direction you're going. Well, you're, you're only going to have to go a little ways before you can then get off and transfer and go back in the direction that you want to go. So let's say you're, you're down here getting on at the Veterans Center, and you actually want to go up here to 13th Street, rather than waiting for the whole loop. You could, you could get off and then kind of transfer. This route is responding to some, just, you know, new information. One thing, when we think about planning these routes, is this is, I should have said this in the beginning, this is a 20-year planning horizon for this planning document. So we're looking for both immediate improvements, but we're also trying to think further down the line of, you know, where are the places we want to make sure to serve? And so this is our existing blue line, but it revises where we're traveling for the future transitional housing. You know, right now, we do serve the, the pallet housing shelter, and that is a very highly used stop for us. And so when that transitions to this, to its new location, we want to make sure that we continue to serve that. So that's what this route is doing. Here, some other things we're looking at is converting from the loops to more of an out and back and adding stops. So again, the benefit of an out and back versus a loop is that you can get on really just in the direction you're going. So you don't need to ride an entire loop if you're going, you know, westbound. You can, you can get on when it's just going westbound, same for eastbound, and not need to, to hang out on the bus, you know, much longer than you need to. This route would still hit most of our major, most of our major trip sites, but does stay kind of just on this one side of town. And here, we're looking at our red route, which I will say is kind of underperforms as compared to the blue route. And so we're looking at different ways. But one thing that we do see is that people on the red route tend to take pretty long trips and almost always request deviations off the route. So when we converted this red route from the loop, we, you know, still kept these endpoints down here at the DMV and elsewhere, but we added stops to where we were primarily taking people on the red route. And so this becomes an out and back with many more stops, kind of serving all of the, many of the main trip areas that people are trying to go. In this version of that out and back on the red, our consultant saw that two of the places that folks, you know, we're going all the way from this eastern end of town to the western of town, we're going out to either the port or up here to Chinawith. And so on this version, there's kind of an out and back but with alternating endpoints. And so it could be that this, you know, continues to travel on back, and every other loop ends either at the port or out here in Chinawith. And so you're still serving these kind of areas that are a little bit further field, but does get people there directly. This is something that we heard in our Transit Need Summary when we were doing that outreach desire. This would take, you know, isn't something we could do alone with our existing funding? But we do currently, we are contracting with Columbia Area Transit right now, and we have a route that goes between the DOWs and Hood River. We operate it during the weekdays four times a day, and Cat operates it on the weekends. One thing we heard though is a desire to connect the two Columbia Gorge Community College campuses between the two communities. And so right now, we do have people going to the community college. And as it stands today, you can take the bus from Hood River, get off here at the Transit Center, and immediately transfer to our blue line and get up to the community college. And then on the other end of things, you can transfer in Hood River up to the, the heights to get up to the, the Hood River campus. But, you know, we did hear a desire from students and faculty for having that kind of direct connection without those transfers. So one thing that we've been kind of looking into and thinking about is, is there a way to basically extend that Hood River to DOWs connector to also go directly up to the two different campuses without the need for transferring? So something we're thinking about. Now I'm going to just go through a few of the new routes that our consultants have recommended that we also think about. The could be in lieu of existing routes or in addition to. So this one is an out and back on 10th Street. You can see it hits again, many of our popular places that people are going. One thing that's really important to me is hitting the high school. Currently, the high school's not on our route, but we move a lot of students. There are a lot of our, our dialer rides that we pick up and drop off. So getting them on a fixed route would be really beneficial for the system, and I think for the students and staff at those colleges. So this one goes on 10th Street, kind of hits that end of town. We have another out and back that we looked at on 6th Street. You know, this hits most of the major kind of pharmacies, grocery stores, a lot of those places that we get a lot of ride requests to. And again, the benefit of this route, the sixth route and the 10th route without out and back is that because it's short enough and direct enough, we can have a pretty high frequency. So people that are going and kind of to the heart of the DOWs wouldn't need to kind of go to all those extraneous places on the edge of town, if we did have an option that went kind of directly in and out, and we could have a much higher frequency so that people can access that kind of more frequently. The one issue I see with this route, and I've talked to our consultants about it, is it is difficult for us to serve on 6th Street just because there isn't really places for our bus to safely pull over onto a shoulder for a bus stop. So while this is drawn on 6th Street, we're also looking at 7th Street, which might be a safer option for us to pull over, a safer option for people to get across the street to access the bus. Because obviously, we don't want people crossing 6th Street unsafely if there's not a light nearby, you know, dodging traffic. So these are all things that we're thinking about. So this is via 6th Street. It can be via 7th Street, but another option. And then these next two slices to show, you know, I wanted to see what these different recommended routes look like when they're paired. Because, you know, we're not going to only have one bus route. So what does our coverage look like? And how would these routes kind of intermingled? Where would the transfers be? And so these are just some options. And they do show that when you pair some of these routes, you get really excellent coverage in terms of that quarter mile accessibility to the route. And you can see that most of the DOWs falls within that shading of being near route. And so this is the figure eight with an out and back. This one has that longer kind of red out and back paired with the figure eight of the blue, although it's in green here. And then this looks like the out and back on 10th Street. So something like this has really great coverage. They are kind of longer lines, and it is three different routes, so it does have a higher cost. And moving out of the DOWs, we're also looking at our routes through the greater kind of Wasco County. One thing that we've been looking at is an out and back route to Madras. Currently, it's inaccessible to get to Madras via public transportation. We do get requests for it on occasion. One reason that there was interest in that is because an out, out and back to Madras would allow you to connect up to other regional transit systems to be able to get further field to Redmond, then Bryanville. It also links up in Madras for you to be able to go back on Highway 26 to Portland. So doing an extension like that could potentially extend the reach of our transit to link up with many other services and kind of expand where people who are transit dependent could go. And looking at that service, we've also kind of looked at within each of those communities where we would want to put stops. So you can see a few stops recommended in due for Thai Valley, Mopin, and then where in Madras that we were looking at stopping. Another option is a new out and back route to Mopin. We do currently have a South County Shuttle that we operate weekly that does run a lot of this route. We, we serve, do for Thai Valley and Mopin on that route. It's, you know, what, once a week, we take reservations. We do deviate. So this is a little bit of a, this one is something that we already serve, but we are looking at kind of adding more stops within those communities to see if we can pick up more riders. And this is just a, some examples of where those stops would be, particularly in Mopin. Currently, we serve two different stops there, but under this scenario, we would cross the river. And since we know it's hard for people to walk across the bridge there, or maybe not difficult, but it's not necessarily safe because there aren't walking facilities on that bridge. So getting across the river to serve the other side of Mopin as well. And then this is something that came out of some of the outreach and stakeholder interviews that we did in earlier phases for the Transit Need. We did hear from some folks in South County about a desire for a route that might go between the Warm Springs Reservation, Madras, Chanaco, and Antelope. So you can kind of see that blue route that wouldn't even, it would connect into the DOWs potentially, but it would really serve more of that east-west across those communities. You know, this is a little bit more difficult. A lot of that is outside of Wasco County. And again, there's some jurisdictional issues with that, but it is something that we wanted to. And again, there's some jurisdictional issues with that, but it is something that we wanted to investigate based on some of the, you know, some of the desires we heard from, from stakeholders in South County. So these are all great ideas, but they do have a lot of things that we need to consider, including costs. And not just the cost for operating for our drivers, but also what sort of new capital. And so this table is showing us kind of both with all of these different options, how many people would we serve? How many jobs are within that area? And then what is the difference in terms of our operating costs? Could we do it today? So you can see some of these conversions and kind of changing up what we're doing with our existing lines. You know, have a, a zero net operating cost in terms of we could, you know, change the routes and do them with the drivers and the vehicles that we have today, so that operating is zero. But because most of these add many new stops, we do have capital costs associated with new bus stops. So this is just kind of giving us a little bit of a gut check in terms of, of costs to operate or implement some of these new ideas. And several of them do have both new bus stops and new buses needed in order to accommodate these recommended routes. Other service enhancements that we had heard during our outreach phases was that, you know, a desire to operate earlier, operate later, operate all days of the week. So just kind of expanding those service hours and then also expanding dialer ride hours. Currently our dialer ride is, is Monday through Saturday and we do operate earlier from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. But you know, there's a desire on weekdays to go later and, and especially later on Saturdays. And then our currently, our six route services are from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And so there was a desire to extend those hours as well. So all of those would come with expanded operating costs. And you can kind of see here what some of those net operating costs would be yearly to implement those expanded hours. Other service opportunities, our consultants have identified coordination with fellow, fellow transit service providers. We do through the Transit Alliance coordinate pretty well. We really strive to coordinate our, you know, our fair technology with our new gorge pass, but also our transit stops allowing good like transfer schedules. So that, you know, when we arrive in Hood River, we pick up with the Columbia Gorge Express into Portland. And when our bus gets back from the river, you know, you're able to hop right onto that blue line. So, you know, we, we, we coordinate pretty well today, but as we expand services or change routes, we just want to make sure that we continue to think about that so that the riders have the best kind of seamless and efficient experience. Information and technology, something that, you know, I'm really interested in looking into to try to make scheduling easier, but also recognizing that a lot of our riders may not be a technologically savvy or comfortable, you know, trip planning on their phones. So it's, it's certainly a balance. Facility improvements, we're always looking to add more bus shelters. We've opened a few this year, but we'd love to be adding more. It creates, you know, a safer, more pleasant environment for the bus. And it also helps us kind of let the community know that the service exists and is out there. It's, it's great advertising for us when we have bus stops and bus shelters. And then fleet improvements, we're always looking for ways to have better, more comfortable buses. We're hoping to transition to electric buses down the line, but we want to make sure that we really have the, the grid capacity to support that. And I am getting very close to my time, so I'm just going to scan, I'm just going to really pull those through these. Basically we're looking at funding opportunities, different options have different funding sources. But you know, in all likelihood, we're going to continue to fall short. These funding scenarios, this black line is our baseline. You can see that's what we have today. That's what we're anticipated to have without any kind of future increases in, in support. And you can see some of these other lines are the things that we've heard that people desire for increased service hours and all of that. And they are well above the existing baseline funding. And so some constrained recommendations and unconstrained, you know, the, the fiscal constraint apply for more grants. We're always doing that and I'll be back to talk about that with you at your next session. And redistributing our resources more efficiently to get the best bang for our buck. So that's really what we're focused on in the near term, working with what we have. But of course, always looking for more additional funding and ways to expand and improve the system. So I'm right at 10:15, so I will stop there. If you have any questions or feedback for me right now, that's great. You're also always welcome to follow up with me and, you know, take a deeper look at the packet and let me know if you have more feedback. And again, there'll be future opportunities as well.
Oh, thank you, Kate. Comments, questions from our commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Hagee.
Thank you for the tons of information. Wow, it's, it's interesting if you think about, I'm an engineer and when I look at that, it's like a complicated, you know, trying to figure out what's best and how the revenues come in. Nice stuff. It was, it was, it was very educational. The question I had, a couple of questions. One was, you mentioned a few times about additional bus stops and obviously there's capital cost to that. What is the rough cost or range of cost for a bus stop?
Yeah, so our last sets of bus stops, I would say ended up being around maybe $12,000. And that includes both the physical cost of the bus shelter and that includes a bench and solar lighting. So that's another safety feature, but also, you know, engineering costs, costs for getting all of the kind of legal paperwork to get the easements, work with the county. So kind of like the lawyers and all of that came to about $12,000.
Okay, and that's per each?
Right.
Okay, okay, very good. The other question I had was, it seems like in most of the, what you had presented, you looked at what the increase in costs were based on whatever the scenario was. And what I was thinking, and I'm, I don't think this is probably, well, anyway, what I was thinking is that there hopefully would be some increased ridership and hopefully increased revenue as a result of that. My assumption is the increase in revenue was pretty insubstantial compared to the increase in cost. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, that's very accurate. I mean, public transit is generally a public service. We, our fares are a dollar fifty a ride, so they're very approachable. But what that means is that our fare revenue is an extremely small portion of our overall budget. So we do anticipate increase in ridership, but it would not be offset by, you know, fares.
Okay, yeah, or $40 a year, right?
Right, right. And to Hood River, it's only a dollar because that's something we took on from CAT and that was their set price. And because of certain Title VI regulations, we couldn't change the price. So, you know, it's, it's, it's more about, you know, giving people accessibility, reducing congestion. All the good things associated with public transit, but it's certainly not a moneymaker.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's great. I mean, obviously you're going to, and I would encourage you guys to do as much as you could to get the routes and, you know, with this little increased cost to be able to provide the best service. Because I think as over time, the hope would be, and I think what will happen is more people will see it as an option for them. And as they see it as an option, you'll get more riders. And as you get more riders, it will become, you know, just a better system and everything. So obviously that's your goal and that's what you're working on. And I wish you all the best in trying to figure out how to make that happen because it's a challenge.
Yeah, and we are, like I said, I, you know, one thing that I, I've found that's a challenge here is that for so long, we were really a public, you know, a dialer ride services. I think a lot of people think that it's just kind of seniors or people with disability and that it's not a general public service bus that's open to anyone. And so I think the more that we have kind of bus stops and shelters and potentially, you know, rebranding or things that make the bus for people to change the perception that, oh, this is actually public transit. You know, I don't need to have a disability to write this. Like this is open to anyone, it's affordable, we'll get more riders. It's, it's that education and seeing it in the community will help kind of change that perception.
For sure. And if we can, I mean, obviously if we can help in that, so, and I'm assuming you have a lot of social media stuff that can be posted in different places. So I would encourage you to get it to our staff so we can push it out in our little ways that we can do that. Because I think I've seen some of the pieces that you have and, you know, I would like to help kind of get that word out. So if you can help us help you, that would be great.
Great, thank you, Commissioner.
That's all I had, Kathy.
Great, Mr. Kramer?
Thank you Chair, thank you Deputy Director. That's, you know, I've, I've seen this several times and I'm very excited about it. And we do have challenges ahead, keeping those funding stream coming along. And I'm sure that we'll work through that. But one note that, that you mentioned just briefly, the congestion. That would be good data to see where, where the reduction of vehicles on the road and how it correlates to with the ridership and, and the, the, basically the unseen benefits of, of this public transit. So great work to you and your team and your volunteers and we'll talk soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay, great. No, it was a wonderful presentation. I, I must say, I did look through the PowerPoint, you know, prior to the meeting and I couldn't quite put it all together. But your presentation really helped me understand all the different lines and colors and, and all of that. So, and, and just one question, did you say this was a 20-year vision? Is that what you mentioned?
Yeah, it's, you know, these planning documents look on a 20-year planning horizon. So when we were looking at kind of demographics and population growth and job centers, we look on a 20-year planning horizon. Although, you know, we are hoping to implement these much nearer term.
Yeah, it, it made me think, you know, if you could get all that done in 20 years, because that's about the time my kids will probably take my keys away. So great if you could make it easier for, for me to get around in 20 years. So good luck with that. Really an excellent presentation. Thank you so much for updating us and members of the public. And of course, this will be on our website for people to access. And it's just really, really great and forward-thinking work. Much appreciated, so, all right.
They'll probably have flying cars by the time 20 years from now.
Or self-driving by any means.
There you go.
This may be pretty scary, but, okay, great, thank you. So we've got a little break here, so I think I'm going to move to the discussion items. Oh, and before I do that, I do want to remember, remind our audience that we are going to be taking a break and we'll be reconvening at 2 o'clock to discuss the Strategic Investment Program Community Service Fee. So please, if you're interested in that subject, reconnect with us at 2:00 PM. So I'm going to move on to the discussion items and I think I'm going to jump a little bit to our Mopin D Transfer and Sales Agreement. Since we've got some folks from Mopin here. So let's do that. And we have a memo, is Jill with us?
I am still here, Kathy.
You are? Hi.
Good morning, Chair and Commission, yes. So to take a little step back, this started in March of 2021 when Mopin expressed a need for some additional land and for future capital improvements and possible affordable housing partnership. If memory serves me right, if I'm wrong, somebody there from Mopin, correct me. But at this time, Wasco County has prepared. At that, at that time, we had already prepared the list for auction, so that kind of slowed the process down. There were more conversations, the board had, we didn't have the policy in place that we have now. The board had said, let's pull this from the auction. Mopin was able to do their due diligence and here we are. I believe it was just the end of November, it was shortly before I went on vacation. Mopin City Council finally voted, got all of their ducks in a row and said, yes, we will purchase the agreement. We now have a signed purchase and sale agreement from Mopin and they are ready to go. So all we need is the final approval by you, the board, to close out this transaction.
Okay, I see we have Kevin Lewis here. Where are you? I see a helicopter, is that like a screenshot or is that real?
It's real too often, but it's just a screenshot.
Okay. Did you have any, anything you'd like to say or comment on, Kevin?
No, I just hope, I hope this works out. It's a great opportunity for the city for, for a future. It's kind of the end of town that has, has our current city properties. So this would be a budding it and it would be perfect for future development. Our, our plan would be some type of housing, affordable housing, which we need desperately and hopefully some park area. So I hope you consider that.
Okay, Commissioner, what questions might you have or comments?
Adam Chair, I have no comments. We've discussed this several times. We've kind of dotted and crossed the T and I'm ready to make a motion if there are no questions of either of you.
I need to add something before you make your motion, Commissioner. There are a couple of changes. Our county surveyor noted that a little bit of language was missing from the legal description, the, the opening paragraph. That has been added to what will be signed. And also Commissioner Schwartz had noticed that there was a date in the sale agreement that said we would be done by November the first, and we are clearly beyond that date. And so our county council has spoken with city council for Mopin and they've agreed that we can correct that, what is now turning out to be a Scribner's error because we're so far behind. So those two things just needed to be on the record before you make your motion.
Thank you, Kathy.
Commissioner Hagee, did you have any comments or questions?
I, I can ask questions now or after the motion, either way.
Oh, sorry, were you ready to make a motion, Commissioner Kramer?
Well, I can do that. We'll, I'll move to approve the sale and purchase agreement and bargain sale indeed for the surplus property, the city of Mopin for consideration of $22,329.22 with the additions as stated by our admin.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Commissioner?
I just had a, a quick question for Jill probably, and then a comment. The comment was just that, just so people know, because sometimes it's, I'm not sure that it actually says it in the documents here, but you can go look online, but the property is roughly like 20 acres in size, is that correct, Jill?
That's correct, Scott.
Okay. And, and just so people know, it's kind of like the property is actually, as you're coming into Mopin above, when you're coming in 197, it's, it's quite high, kind of up there at the edge of city limits. But, so it's just interesting to know kind of where the city's looking to expand and that's where they have some water infrastructure as well. The question I had for you, Jill, was, I'm just curious, like the $22,329.22, where does that number come from?
Those are the foregone taxes. So the taxes that were outstanding for six years, any fees for maintenance and whatnot, which we didn't really have any down there. So that the districts are made whole essentially, because when we foreclose, we essentially write off the taxes. So our, our minimum is always to try and make those districts whole with a foregone tax because of the foreclosure.
Perfect, okay. So this was a foreclosed on piece of property that we got, you know, when we got it? When it actually came to be in Wasco County's hands?
I.
It's a while ago, right?
It is, we've had it for a while.
Okay, cool. So, perfect. And so just so, again, so folks know, I mean, the county ends up with these pieces of property and it's obviously our intent to always get those back into the private sector. Sometimes like in this case, it makes sense to put it back into the public sector, but oftentimes not us. Because in this case, the city of Mopin has, you know, growth needs and uses for it. So I think this is a great, a great thing that we can do for, to help with Mopin and South Wasco County.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagee. And Kevin, I do have one question. I recall there was some need for this property to enhance your water system, is that right? Can you, can you kind of expand on that a little bit?
Well, the next future expansion will be future water to feed some of those areas only because of the elevation. It's about level or even a little higher than our current water tower. So that, that would be the prime spot there on the upper side.
I see, for expansion.
Correct.
Okay, excellent, okay. All right, anything else? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Thank you very much Jill and Kevin for being here. Okay, I'm going to jump to our Budget Committee appointment because Diora's been here waiting patiently for an hour and a half. Good morning, Diora. Let's see.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you, okay. So it looks like we have an application, we have a, it looks like we have a vacancy on our Budget Committee as, as we know. like we have a vacancy on our budget committee. As, as we know, Frank Kay has resigned from our budget committee and, and I think he was just appointed last year, right? Right? I think so. Yeah, he was, he was definitely a short-termer, but I think he's moved away or plans to move away. But at any rate, he's not willing to serve this year. So I'm very happy to see that we do have one applicant and that is Deora Patton. And board members, do you have any questions? Deora spelled out an application. And for those of you who don't know, Deora, Deora was the city of Mopin reporter and budget officer, which is how I have come to meet and attend some meetings with Deora. But Deora, you do live in Mopin, right?
Yes, I do.
Awesome. All right. It's always great to have a representation on our committees from the southern part of our county, for sure. So would you like to say anything to us, Deora, besides the morning or?
Well, I was going to say that, yes, I just appreciate the opportunity that government gives everyone to be participant, active member, various needs, you know, budget being one of them. So I've been sitting around for a year. I thought, well, I can offer my services to do something and provide some of the balance, you know, like I said, as representation from South County.
Oh, thank you so much. Obviously, you've got some wonderful budget experience, which I think will be a, a huge asset for the budget committee. So Commissioners, comments or questions or?
I would move to approve order number 22-002, appointing Deora Patton to the Wasco County Budget Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may, Ms. Patton, thank you for stepping up and wanting to be part of the team to keep Wasco County moving forward. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. I echo that as well. Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Welcome. Awesome. And, you know, retirement, that's an interesting thing, isn't it? You retire for a while. I kind of had that same experience, but we won't go there.
Yeah, it's kind of bad retiring during a pandemic, so.
Ah, for sure. All right. Well, really look forward to seeing you and working with you, Deora. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Um, all right. So what have we got here? It's 10:30. So we're going to move on to our bargain sale indeed to city of Doofur. So I'm assuming either Arthur or Merle will be joining us, popping in. Ah, there's Arthur. Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, I hope, I hope the, I hope, I hope his honor, the mayor will-
I'm here. I'm here.
Good. So anyway, for the record, Arthur Smith, Public Works Director, Wasco County. So in the spring of last year, I was approached by the city of Doofur that they had a, I believe is a DEQ project, think some for their, anyway, for their sanitary sewer treatment project. And they contacted me because they're inquiring about purchasing the sec, the county-owned lot that runs along Doofur Bypass Road. And if you kind of go to the, the second or the first overhead picture, it'll kind of show the highlighted lot there. Anyway, the, basically on that site, it was just, it, it was a county rock quarry and we've had it in our inventory since like the twenties, since like 1920. The last time we've actually utilized material out of there was during the 96 flood. So it's not a very active pit. So I talked with the city and said that, yeah, we would be willing to, it, it had no substantial land value, but the mineral rights, you know, there was still a lot of rock and, and as long as our rights to obtain the rock and to perform aggregate operations on there was protected, I was okay with it. And then obviously, there's also a $3,000 cost. That's mostly just to cover our county legal counsel. Anyway, so between the city of Doofur Legal Counsel and Wasco County Council, they came up with the, with the agreement you have before you. Like I said, in a nutshell, basically transfers that over to the city. But the county does retain all our mineral rights and our, allows us to continue to access the rock and to have, to put a crusher on there to, to use the material for county roads in the future. So that's, I think it's a real win-win for both of us. The city can speak more specifically on why they need the setback for their project, but from my, from my aspect, I, I support the, I support the agreement.
Thank you, Arthur. Would the city of Doofur like to comment?
Well, of course I would. Good morning, Commissioners and all the other visitors on board this morning. The reason we needed to approach the county and ask for this piece of property was to meet a DEQ setback for an existing project that we did, I'm assuming, 15, 16 years ago. And we didn't realize we were supposed to have a farther setback from where we put our standpipe up. And we were kind of caught in a hard place and they didn't seem to be very willing to issue a permit for the new system we're trying to upgrade unless we acquired this land. So speaking with our lawyer and the Anderson Perry engineers, they go, I needed to go hat in hand very quietly and ask kindly for your help, which I appreciate, you guys being able to do this. The ongoing upgrades for Doofur will help us provide more housing as well as meeting a requirement that has been reminded to us by the federal government for our sewer system to be newer and more modern and up to date. So yes, we are very much in link step with you guys about having this piece of property. Any questions from anybody else?
Commissioners, is that a handbrake, Steve, or just a pen jiggling in the air?
Just a pen jiggling. I'm, I'm all in favor of this and we need to, we need to help our city to the south expand their wastewater so that the city can move forward with their future plans.
Commissioner Hagie?
Uh, I didn't have any questions. I guess I was, well, maybe did have a question.
Come on, ask me.
Well, maybe it's not for you, Merle.
Oh, okay.
Um, I was just curious about two things. One, how long have we had this property? I think we've had it for a long time. It's a little bit different situation in this case, because it wasn't, I don't think it was a piece of property we were foreclosed on. And this agreement that we have, again, just so folks know, is it, it, Wasco County retains our ability to pull off rock off the site, because for us, Wasco County has had it for, as a rock site. So I don't know, Arthur, if, if I have that all accurate and, or I've missed something?
No, 100% on. No, we, 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 we've had it in the inventory since 1924, but, but only as a, a quarry site. It's never been, in fact, it was part of the, originally, I think it was part of the right-of-way of the state highway and they would develop these borrow sites as they were going along, building the old highway and the county obtained it somehow back in the twenties. So, yes, and, and the, the value in it is that we continue to have future use with the rock. And like I said, it meets both our needs, really. We still get to use the site and have, get rock off it and the city is in the good graces with DEQ with the setback. So.
Perfect. Little history there. Thanks. Thanks, Arthur.
Okay. Well, with that, just thank you, Arthur, for all the work that you've done on that. And the photos were really helpful. I think that's something we drive by pretty often, isn't it? Right on 197?
Every day you come out here, come on into the city, we're waiting for you.
Yeah, all right, will do. All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the land transfer agreement and statutory bargain sale and deed conveying property to the city of Doofur, retaining county mineral-like mineral rights for consideration of $3,000.
Thank you, and I will second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment. So the, the property is actually not on 197. It's on the, one of the, the road coming, it's that south road coming down from Doofur. You can probably see it from 197, but you'd have to be up on the other road, just so people know where it's at.
Okay. All right. So we've had a motion and a second. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. The motion passes. Thank you. Thanks for being here. It's nice to see you, Mayor Keys and whoever else is in the room. All right. Good luck with your, your infrastructure projects. Glad we could help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, looks like we've got a few minutes before our hearing. So let's go back to our discussion items. If I can get it back up on my iPad here. Okay, let's go to the expunction agreement. Molly, are you here?
I think she had to leave.
Okay. Will she be back, do you think, or?
I don't know. I think her expectation was that we'd get to it in that first half hour. And so she had her schedule cleared for that.
Okay. And what is the desire of the Commissioners? Would you like to get Molly back before we move on that? Or do you feel you have enough information in the packet or?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I've got a question, but I guess I could deal with it offline. It has to do with, with the, the, the resources that are given. And I'm just pulling off the top of my head, I'd get it open, but 30, what, $32,000?
35,870.
Okay, thank you. And then there's a $206 per expunction. And if I do the math correctly, that's like 174 expunctions. Do we, my question is, do we have that many that, that we need to deal with? So, but the, the agreement in all of the other piece, I'm fine with. That was the question for, for numbers.
Okay. Well, I, I'll try. I know, I did have a conversation with Molly. She felt that with the numbers that they expect that this will well cover, you know, any, any expenses and, and probably they'll come, they'll be to the good a bit on this one. So she had no concerns about the amount. And so, but we can certainly get, try to get Molly back if you would prefer. And-
If, if with, with that information, Chair, I'm, I'm willing to move to approve the IGA 14840 for the expunction of juvenile records.
And I'll second that.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
The other thing in my discussion with Molly as well, so I, I asked her that same question. I, but I was more interested as well in the ongoing funding of that, because, you know, this is kind of an ongoing thing. And what I didn't want to happen was this kind of rolls into an unfunded mandate. So she thought that this was going to be ongoing funding and, you know, we would see how it goes, but she felt fairly comfortable about it. I was curious as well, you know, $206, $206.15 per expungion. But I was curious what actually goes into that and who's involved in making sure that that covers the cost. But she said it did. So maybe it's something we can talk about in the future, because I think there was, if I remember, there was an article recently in the paper that showed, like, had some information about this and talked about maybe four of the youth that were, that received this, I think.
Yeah, I, there was, yeah. And, and maybe, you know, I'm not an expert in this, but I, my understanding, just for the public, is that this is a, a new process from new legislation that actually expunges, is that a word? The records of certain juvenile crimes. And so that, there's obviously some criteria that the state has put forward for some of our juveniles who would actually be able to take advantage of this once they turn 18. And that record gets expunged and therefore makes it so they can get jobs and just have a better future, hopefully for them. So I don't know that I explained that quite. I know I didn't explain it as well as Molly could, but do you think that I kind of got it?
Yep, I think so.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 And Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Tell Molly not to leave me again. My goodness. Okay. All right. So it looks like it is 10:45 on the button. So we're going to move to our fee schedule.
Hey Kathy. Oh.
Yes.
I just was going to comment, there was a comment in the chat about, are we going to take any public comment? I didn't know if that was a general public comment or on the subject, just so you're aware of that.
Yeah, thank you. I, I saw that. I, I'm, I will definitely take public comment, but we need to get to the fee right on time so we can do that. And then I will go right to public comment after that. Thank you, Scott. And thank you, Sheila. All right, great. Okay, so right now it is 10:45 and at this time, we will recess from our regular meeting to open the second of two public hearings regarding amendments to the Wasco County Fee Schedule ordinance. An official recording is being made of what is said at this hearing. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard. Therefore, persons addressing the commission are requested to begin by stating their name and address. Speak clearly. Only one person may speak at a time. This is the time for presentation of testimony. No debate is allowed. And the order of presentation will be staff presentation, testimony from anyone wishing to speak, and questions from the commission. So at this time, let's hear the staff presentation.
So there's not a lot to present. This is something that you've looked at a number of times. This is the second hearing at which you can deliberate and vote. What I do need to point out is there have been a couple of non-substantive changes to the ordinance. Appendix D had not been referenced in the body of the ordinance on the first page. It just referenced appendixes A, B, and C. So I corrected that and added Appendix D to that reference. And then a couple of the appendices did not have their title where it said which appendix it was. So I corrected that. There's no changes to the fees. There's no, no language changes that affect the outcome of the ordinance. And just for the public's information, once the board passes an ordinance, it is not effective for 90 days. So the effective date of this, I believe, is April the 5th.
Excellent. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, at this time, have there been any written materials that have been submitted?
I received no written materials.
Okay. And at this time, does anyone wish to be heard? And just to be clear, to be heard on this subject matter of the fees, anyone from the public that wishes to be heard on our fee schedule? Okay, I don't see anybody popping in or raising their hands, unless I'm missing it. Okay, so at this time, do any Commissioners have questions or any comments or, or staff? Commissioner Hagie?
A comment and then maybe a question. So it seemed, well, two questions. So in looking at the numbers, it looks like, if you do the math, it looks like most of the fees, maybe all the fees, but most of the fees are increased by 15%. Is that correct, Kathy Clark?
And so I didn't do the work on the increases. I believe the work was done by a previous building codes official. So I didn't go back and do the math, Commissioner. I can't answer that question.
Okay. I think I, I didn't do it on all of them, but I went through several of them. So just so folks know, that's the increase that we're-
I know that there was a, a previous to this, there was one that was submitted to the board, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, that had considerably more in the increases, you know, sometimes 40, 50% in the increases. And the board was reluctant to increase them that quickly.
Yeah, okay. And I think that the 15%, it's, I would say it's a bit high from the standpoint of an annual increase, but I don't think we've increased the fees for quite some time on this one.
Since 2013.
Okay. So, and I think what we've talked about and will be considering as we go forward, but what we're trying to do on fees generally is look at them annually. So we have more of a kind of a cost of, a cost of living increase for a lot of our fees. One of the other questions I had, Kathy, for you, is that- One of the other questions I had Kathy for you is that this, because building codes is involved in this, we had to send it to to state building codes. They advertise for us. What is the process? I know they advertise and put it out there on their website that we're proposing to increase. Do they look at this and provide any comments or tell us yes or no?
They do not. They they do not give us feedback on how we're increasing the fees. Or at least they didn't either time accent them to them. I don't know if at other times they do that. But we have received no comments. They just ask us for certain documents and then they post and distribute those accordingly and look for public comment. And so they they have not provided me with any public comment that they've had any feedback on this.
Okay, so it sounds like then this, if whatever decision we make on this would be the decision that would go into effect ninety days from now.
Exactly. And and just so that, just for future, I will try, be trying to coordinate our fee schedule updates so that we don't have to do the the building codes separate from our regular ones. I'll, I'll try to work backwards on the calendar and work with building codes at at an earlier time so that when we get to the point of bringing it to the board, we are done in one here, one set of hearings.
Perfect. Thank you, Kathy.
Okay. All right. All right, so it, I'll entertain a motion at this time if there's no further discussion.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll move to approve ordinance twenty-two dash zero zero one in the matter of amending Wasco County's uniform fee schedules for various county departments.
Second that motion.
Do we need to add to the motion the scribner's errors that Kathy mentioned, or?
You can. I'm not, they're not substantive changes.
Okay.
So this is probably not necessary.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Okay, all of us in favor, please say aye.
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 And chair both side. Thank you, Kathy, for all that work. All right. It's been a kind of a long process, as I recall. Okay. Okay, we'll go back, see where we're at. All right, so it looks like we have a little time. I, at this time, will open up the floor to any public comments. So if there's anyone out there that would like to say something and comment to us, please do so and please identify yourself in so doing.
Hi, this is Sheila Dooley, thirty-three hundred Vensel Road, Mosher. And this might be too early to be asking about this. But in March, you know, the Wilson remand went to the planning commission. And you probably know they had a tight vote. It's going on to the county commission. And, you know, I just noticing that Lopez hearing was going to be de novo. So I was wondering if, do you know yet if the Wilson hearing, will that be a de novo or on the record? Maybe it's too early to be asking this. And also, I was just gonna comment on the hearing instructions. That it, they always say you have to ask for party status to be able to appeal. But you, according to Luba, you can, if you, you can appeal to Luba if you appear before the governing body either orally or in writing. So I was just kind of wondering why that party status thing is in there. But anyway, and I also would like to know sometime how long, at the Wilson hearing, how long we'll have to speak. I think it was five minutes last time, the first time I went through. Anyway, I, you probably don't have the answers to those today, but I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
Okay, good questions. Kelly, do you want to respond, or would you rather wait and get back to us on those questions?
No, I can respond now. Thank you, Chair. For the record, Kelly Hausig Glover, Wasco County Planning Director. Sheila, it's my understanding that for the Wilson Luba remands, it will be limited to, it is de novo, but it's limited to the items on remand. So it's not the full scope of the application. It's just those items that Luba remanded.
So. Okay.
And we can, we can follow up with you at more length, Sheila, to get into the nitty, to get into the nitty gritty with that. I'm, I don't want to bore everybody else on the phone with those details. We, our ordinance actually requires the party status to be explicitly asked for. That's why it's included in any kind of hearing script. And you were a party, I I believe, so you should have standing to appeal. But it doesn't hurt to to ask in in the course of the hearing for party status. And then your other question was, oh, help me out.
Oh, it's time limit to speak.
Oh, time limits.
Last time.
And maybe Kathy Clark can help me out. Typically, land use, we offer about three minutes. But that's, that's tends to be at the planning commission level. I believe the board has been more flexible in the past.
I think we did five with the Board of Commissioners last time, yeah, because three is so short. You know, we end up just talking as fast as we can and nobody understands anything we're saying, so, yeah. Anyway.
Thank you, Sheila. Really good questions. Okay, would anyone else in the public like to speak?
Could I ask just a quick follow-up to Kelly?
Of course.
Sorry, Kelly, I just, the the party status thing, is that new based on our new update? Because I don't remember that that particular language being in there in past scripts.
No, it's consistent with the way our ordinance is read.
Okay.
There's some nuanced difference between the scenic area and the county. And so it's a little bit more explicit in the scenic area, which is what you heard today with the Lopez hearing. That's probably why you're noticing a difference. We do generally try to align the two to make them consistent. But with the ordinance updates, those paths have have diverged it again. So you may, you may notice some differences in the future.
All right, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Kelly, very much for jumping in and helping out there. Okay.
Molly's back, by the way.
Oh, oh, I, where is she? She's hiding.
Molly's.
Well, I do want to just give just another moment in case there's anyone else that would like to comment at this time. Okay, I I do appreciate folks being with us today, for sure. So, so Molly, are you there? Ah, gotcha. Okay. Well, just, I know you had to leave, and I'm sorry, but we did go ahead and pass the expunction agreement. And I did my best to explain it, but maybe you could do a better job. And just for the benefit of our audience, explain exactly in a better way what it is. And I I know the three of us understood it, but I don't, I don't know that we articulated as well as you could.
Sure. Chair Schwartz and Commissioners, Senate Bill eight seventeen passed the legislature in two thousand and twenty-one. And what it was, was automatic expunction for youth who turn the age of eighteen, who do not have any allegations filed in court. So it's youth who are on diversion or status offenses who are referred to our office, who are captured in the juvenile justice information system. And so the legislative legislature passed a methodology that we could automatically expunge those records without having to go through the court process. And in doing so, they acknowledged that that was going to be a workload for the counties. Because at, up until this point, there was an application process. And we actually had in our fine schedule and fee schedule, a sixty-dollar fee that that youth and their families would have to pay. That went away. And so the state of Oregon set a case rate of two hundred and six dollars for each expunction that is completed by our office. At this time, we think we are able to just manage this within our current staffing. And there are definitely larger departments that had to add staff in order to make this work. But we believe that we are able to do it with our official process here in Wasco County without any additional staff time. So that is what the contract is for, is really setting that case rate of, I think, just slightly over two hundred and six dollars per expunction. And with the Oregon Youth Authority being the agency that manages those funds. So that's kind of a high-level explanation.
It's much better than what I gave, for sure. Thank you, Molly.
Just a quick question. And so who's all involved in that, like, from our side? Is it mostly in your office, or is there stuff happening in the DA's office?
So, great question, Commissioner Hagee, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. It really comes from our office and law enforcement. So these are cases that are not filed in court. So they typically do not have involvement from our district attorney's office. They're primarily through us. And so we start the process and send it to the youth, and then it goes to whatever agency that was involved in the, along the lines. So the Dallas City Police Department, Wasco County Sheriff's Office, Oregon State Police, we also have Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and Madras City Police, who we receive referrals from. Those are our primary referral locations. And so it's really back to those departments to then redact, seal, or destroy the records. So that's where the the lift is. There is a secondary process that is for youth who, we have a petition filed in court, but it is not adjudicated. So it's dismissed. It's what we call diversion, court diversion, that actually then involves the court in the process. But again, those are primarily, our office has the ability to manage those.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Molly. It's so wonderful to have such wonderful subject matter experts in our county to help us along. So thank you. Let's see, we've got a couple minutes. So let's see, is Kenny with us yet? Oh, there he is. Kenny.
I'm here.
Hi, are you ready to go ahead and give us a report?
Chair, before he gets started, before he gets started, you still have one item on the discussion list that you probably have time to go through now if you want to.
Okay.
Or the consent agenda.
Okay, let's do that. Help, hold on, Kenny. Okay. All right, well, let's go, let's go ahead to the consent agenda and get that. Or actually, I'm gonna change my mind. I do that a lot. Let's go to the MCCFL Pacific Source letter. Hi, Tyler, would you like to give us a little brief on that?
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. Yes, basically, what this is, actually, let me step back. So as you know, but maybe the public doesn't, Wasco County has had a, and been putting in a significant effort in assisting Mid-Columbia Center for Living with some of their key operations. In, in an effort just to shore the entity up while they're working on filling vacancies and a few things like that. And part of that is we have been in negotiations with Pacific Source, which is primary pair for the the CCO for Mid-Columbia Center for Living. And this letter is basically saying thank you because Pacific Source has really stepped up and in particularly in helping to provide a stability payment for Mid-Columbia Center for Living. And that payment will just help us transition from where we're at today to where we're headed with all the things that we're dealing with, which was, you know, unionization, recruitment, and a host of other, other issues. And so we're asking for the commission's support today to put this letter forward and acknowledge Pacific Source for really stepping up in what is probably one of our single largest needs in this community is around mental health and and the work that Mid-Columbia Center for Living does. And if you'll notice in this letter, there's also a kind of blue section there for personal story. And I'm hoping, you know, that one or more of the commissioners may have a personal story that they want to insert into this letter. And then we'll get this off and get it, get it signed and get it over to Pacific, Pacific Source, acknowledging that commitment and the commitment they've made through a lot of the other work that that we're doing as well. So other than that, this, the stability payment is tied to our current contractual negotiations. So I don't have a number for you yet. But we are are well into the process of finalizing the the primary Pacific Source contract. So we've been at that for several months now. So so that's where we're at. And I don't know if Commissioner Hagee wants to add anything. He's our representative on the board.
Nope, you did a great job, Tyler. I think this, I think this is a good idea and I support it.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. Commissioner Kramer, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Stone, I think that at this point, the lived experiences need to come later. And just be short and sweet and to the point with this letter is the way I look at it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So I would, you know, there, in that blue section, it talks about, we've seen blank. I think just for, from where I am, just continuing that sentence, we've seen problems in the schools and, you know, lost jobs, homelessness, higher rates of substance abuse, all of the above, I think, still needs to be included in that letter. So I don't really have a personal story to add, but I would ask that we include all of those things that we're facing that that are mentioned in that letter. Okay.
Thank you. We can make that change.
So I think that's something we just need consensus on, correct?
Correct.
Okay, can I see a thumbs up, or? Okay. Tyler, I can't thank you enough for this work you're doing with Pacific Source. You are the right person to do it. And thank you. And I I guess I did have one other question, sorry. Are the other counties involved, like Hood River and Sherman, sending similar letters?
Yes, so first, thank you. But this is not me. This is the efforts of at least three people here. So primarily Al Barton and Silas Halloran. So I'm representing the communities and counties in in this discussion. And yes, this letter has also been moved to Hood River County and Sherman County for concurrents at their, at their meetings.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. All right. Okay, let's see. Now I think we're gonna go on and move to Kenny. Good morning, Kenny. Always great to see you. And you are going to give us some follow-up. You know, I spoke briefly at our last meeting a couple of weeks ago about the strategic, or the coordinated homeless response pilot program that our community has at least somewhat been selected for. And there's just more information. Some of the other commissioners had questions that I couldn't answer at the time. So we're inviting you here to give us the latest and greatest and up-to-date information on this important project that our community may benefit from. So thank you.
Thanks, Chair Schwartz and Commission members. Good to see you all. Good to be back here again. So, yeah, as the Chair mentioned, and per the meeting that I attended in December, we did submit a letter of interest for what is called LC two eighteen, Legislative Concept two eighteen, which was introduced into the legislature's short session, introduced on Friday of last week. This was around the coordination of counties and cities around developing a coordinated homeless service system. We, we submitted a letter of interest on behalf of Hood River, Wasco, Sherman Counties, as well as the city of the Dals and the city of Hood River. We were selected to be included in legislation. So I want to be very clear, this does not mean we get anything yet. We still have legislation that needs to pass, which may be where you all come in. We still have legislation that needs to pass, which may be where you all come in, and I think you already have come in in some ways around this. But we were selected to be included in there, there are eight communities that were selected to be included in the legislation. We are kind of unique because we asked for some things in our letter that were a little bit different than the way they had originally articulated the concept, and so they adjusted the concept to address that. But what, one difference for us is that all the other communities that are included in LC 218 are one city and one county collaborating together. We're better than that because we've got three counties and two cities that are collaborating together, because that is the region that Mid Columbia Community Action Council serves, that's the region that a lot of our agencies serve, including, you know, the agency you were just talking about with the Mid Columbia Center for Living, so. This whole, this legislation will, if it passes, will bring $1 million to Mid Columbia Community Action Council to do coordination of the homeless service system, it's $500,000 per year over two years. The dollars are really designed to help us develop a strategic plan around addressing homelessness and developing a coordinated office. That being said, we are already in the process of developing a strategic plan, which was funded by Providence Health Systems. So we're a little bit, a little bit ahead of the game, and that is also where another request came from us in our letter of interest, which was, we want to use the dollars that we would receive, or at least a portion of them, to actually implement the strategic plan that we're already developing. We do not need money to develop a strategic plan because we're doing it, so let us actually take those funds and put them on the ground and serve people with them. So that request was acknowledged by, by the folks who are working on this bill, and I'll note that Representative Crop from Bend, the Bend area, is the, the lead on this bill from a legislator, legislative sponsor standpoint. So we did get that in there, that we can use the dollars for implementation, so long as we achieve, achieve two, two of the goals identified in legislation, which is the development of a strategic plan and the development of a coordinated office. As I mentioned, we are already working on those things. In legislation, Mid Columbia Community Action is the lead agency, that's a little bit different than every other lead agency, because every other lead agency is a city or county government. In our case, it is a community-based nonprofit organization, and my agency, Mid Columbia Community Action Council, which Chair Schwartz is on the board of. So we would be developing a memorandum of understanding between Mid Columbia Community Action, the city and county governments that are involved, that would be part of the process if the legislation passes. And that would help us do the coordination efforts. Again, as I mentioned, we get to use the funding for implementation, so my vision around the use of these resources, obviously in coordination with you all, would be that we, we use dollars for implementation, and we also use funding to develop a sustainability plan, so bringing folks on who can help us, who can help us bring in additional resources, that is a role that I've taken on in my position over the last year or so. And we've been pretty effective in that, I think we've brought in somewhere in the, the $7 million range, which is more than double the Community Action Agency budget. We've been able to bring in a lot of money, but I, we could definitely use some additional support in fund development for our region. One thing it can't be used for is capital, so I'm sure that question will come up as we're working on this navigation center development in the DOWS. We cannot use that funding for the development of the navigation center. Potentially could be used for operational dollars of the navigation center, because it is a multi-agency center, but can't be used for capital. So that is what I have to update you on as far as Legislative Concept 218. I had two other things that I wanted to mention, but I'm gonna give you a chance to answer, ask any questions that you have of me before we go there.
Thank you Kenny, I'll open it up for questions from Commissioners. Looks like Scott, you're unmuted, ready to go.
I didn't have any questions.
Not possible.
Possible.
Commissioner Kramer.
Yeah, thank you Chair. In, in my packet, Mr. LaPointe, I've got a letter dated December 9th, and I've got an LC 178. You've referenced 218, is, are you gonna be our point of contact to keep us up to date on correspondence and, and where things are going? Or, or do I need to flag that on, on my, on my own to, to keep this advocacy going?
Great, great questions Commissioner Kramer, and first of all, I just want to say, I really appreciate the advocacy from the entire Commission on the introduction of this bill. Each of you played a role in that in one way or another, and helped carry some weight here to make this happen, so I greatly appreciate your advocacy on that front. I'm happy to be the lead here, AOC and LOC are working on setting up an intro meeting of the regions that were selected, which I believe is gonna take place next week. During that intro meeting, we're gonna be talking about how our communities can advocate for the bill. So I'll have more information on that come next week, and I'm happy to just, you know, keep you apprised. I'm hoping to be able to come back to you in February as well, so I could kind of give you a, a sort of mid-session update. Commissioner Kramer, you're heavily involved with the Association of Oregon Counties, I'm sure you'll probably have a pulse on it before I even do, but happy to also play a point.
Yeah, thank you Chair, and, and to that, we've got a little bit of turmoil at AOC, because our Health and Human Services Legislative Director is no longer with us, so our, our staff is spread very, very thin at this point, and so, so we'll just keep working together to, to keep everybody up to speed so that we're ready to go when hopefully this all takes place down at the Legislature.
Yeah, and it sounds like both from, from AOC's legislative leadership standpoint, there's been somebody who's designated to follow through on, on this particular bill, and from League of Oregon City's side of things, there's also been somebody designated to follow through on the bill as the Legislative Lead. There is out on, is gonna be out on maternity leave starting in a couple weeks here, so we're gonna have some new folks helping lead this, that is one of the reasons why we wanted to get together next week, is to really drum up some advocacy from all of us, we're gonna, each community involved in the legislation, I think, is gonna help carry the weight of this. There are eight communities that were selected here, and from my initial take, it looks like most of them are sort of rural. We, we are unique again, because we're a combination of rural frontier in our region, and I think there's one, one urban area, which is the sponsor bill from Bend to Shute County.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, follow-up question then, with the original was, was for five pilots, and now it's been increased to eight. Did, did the funding increase as well? I haven't seen the final 218 as it was sent into.
Yes, Commissioner Kramer, the, the bill has eight communities and $8 million, so $1 million, $1 million per community. I think there was a, there was five, and then there was maybe nine, and then there ended up being eight, so there is $1 million per community, and that is, as of last night, is when I received the most recent copy of the bill. And I'm happy to send that along to you, to you all, so you can take a look at it as well. I know when I sent the info for this packet in, it wasn't finalized yet, there was actually some corrections that needed to be put into the bill.
Very good, thanks for that clarity. Thank you Madam Chair.
Sure, thank you Kenny, I really feel confident that you're gonna be really watching this closely, and you will let us know if there's anything we need to do, and speaking for myself, I will drop everything and do whatever I can as you need it, and so yeah, I think this is something that is very needed in our community. I think we heard the mayor came to our meeting a couple weeks ago and talked about the, you know, we do have, the mayor has called together a homeless coalition, and it does involve city, county, and other agencies, so we're just, you know, we're, we're, we're a little bit ahead of the game, but he really did call for really solidifying this group and adding resources to it for it to actually really take off, so this is exactly what we need, and I really feel fortunate that Kenny was really successful in changing some of that language to make it so that it will work for our community. And I really commend the sponsors for listening for once, and actually tailoring that bill to respond to our requests. So, thank you for your amazing advocacy Kenny, Commissioner Hegi, did you, you're unmuted.
I'm just gonna go yay Kenny.
Yay Kenny.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a yay to, to you all, to each county and each city that was involved in, in helping make this happen, because you all had to basically give us the thumbs up. I just, you know, wrote a letter that said, we've got great collaboration, and our cities and counties are ready to jump on this. So you all got together in really quick fashion and said, go for it, and that approval is really what made it happen, so I appreciate you all jumping on that.
Great, well, nice to see you, and thank you for your time, oh, Steve, it looks like you have another question, hand up.
Yeah, not necessarily a question, just a comment, that there's still conversation out there about counties' involvement in all of this, and, and where, where county does actually fit in, so. Because if, if I read, most of the issues are, are, these are mostly city-based issues, so not necessarily unincorporated county issues. So there's still a lot of conversation to be had, and just wanted to let you know that that's still being talked about, so that there's still a lot, lot of work to do, so thank you.
Great, okay, thanks Kenny for being here, appreciate it.
Can I, can I mention a couple other things before I go? They'll, they'll be quick.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you Chair Schwartz. So, two other things I just wanted to mention is, we've made significant progress on our Navigation Center pre-development. We will be, I will be coming back in mid-February to give you an update on that, and hopefully I'm gonna have a bunch of programming info to share with you, as well as preliminary design information, and I'll be able to share our site with you, which I know everybody's kind of been waiting to hear about, so we'll have a lot more information on that in February. And lastly, I just wanted to throw a pitch out there, next week is the annual Point in Time Homeless Count. Mid Columbia Community Action is leading that effort across the three-county region. We will be setting up basically staging areas throughout the three-county area of Mid Columbia Community Action's offices in the DOWS, that 312 East 4th Street is going to be a staging area, Monday through Wednesday, we'll be doing counts there. But we're, we'll actually have outreach teams that will be going out into, into homeless camps, be going out to hotels, be doing counts at our shelters throughout the region, to make sure we get as best a count as we can of the homeless population across the region. This count is really important, because it does determine formulas of funding that come to our region to address homelessness, so federal and state dollars that come here are dictated in some ways by the Point in Time Count. We have not done a great job at the Point in Time Count in the past, so we're hoping to do a much better job this year, and like I said, we'll have outreach teams out, out and about, hitting the streets, doing surveys with folks, surveys are really fairly anonymous, you don't have to write full names or information like that, we're just trying to get a good grasp on the total number of folks experiencing homelessness, why they are experiencing homelessness, whether that's an eviction, foreclosure, healthcare issue, behavioral health issues, we ask a lot of questions like that. And, you know, get a good idea of what the demographics of the population look like. We know there's a lot of native community members, for instance, that are disproportionately impacted by homelessness, so we'll be looking into that a lot more with the Point in Time Count, but it is coming next week. If you have any questions about that, don't hesitate to give me a call, shoot me an email, and happy to connect folks with my team that is gonna be working that all week next week, so. That's it for me, thanks for having me.
Yeah, don't go yet. I do have a couple questions, just real quickly on that, do you count veterans in that?
Absolutely, and that is a, a characteristic that we're also documenting is whether somebody is a veteran or not, because it does, I think, I think folks know that we're, that Mid Columbia Community Action is hoping to apply for state funding this year to build a development in town that will address veteran homelessness. And that data point will play into that development, because we'll be able to demonstrate that there is a need for more housing for veterans experiencing homelessness, and so that is definitely a, a part of the count.
And when will that count be ready?
That's a really good question, I think we'll actually have some preliminary numbers probably within a month. Counts previously were done with paper, and so we literally went around with clipboards and paper, and thanks to advancements in technology, we have the ability to use tablets and online systems to do mobile counts, and so our teams will be out there with tablets, which will allow for the tabulation of the numbers to come in much quicker than if you, if you did paper, paper surveys, so. It'll, it should be a lot more streamlined, we should have a lot more information, at least have a base sort of number that we can provide to folks and say, this is the number we counted. I'll also mention here that the Point in Time Count typically only counts folks who are either living in a homeless shelter or are completely unsheltered. And the federal definition of homelessness does not include those who are doubled up in housing, so if you're living with a friend just to get by through the winter, which don't even get me started on why we do a count in the middle of wintertime, and that is a federal, that is a federal determination, not our determination, but the federal government says we have to do it that way. But we will be doing a count of folks who are doubled up, which is going to be very important just for our community to know, because we all know that somebody can be staying in someone's house one night, and the next night they could be living in a tent, and that's really weather-dependent, resource-dependent, whether or not you have a friend who's willing to let you crash in their place for a night. So we are working with the homeless liaisons in the school district, and I actually just got an email from Molly Rogers a few minutes ago saying, hey, we would love to help more with this, and we may have some info on, on folks who we could get counted, and so we'll be, we'll be working with Molly on that as well, to make sure we're getting a good count of folks who are doubled up, so.
Awesome, and I'm assuming that, that information is, is open to the public, once it's compiled? Or some, some data points would be, because I think that would be of interest to our board at some point, so we'll circle back on that, maybe have you come back and present the results of that, I think that's of high,
Absolutely.
High interest to our community, there's just a lot of, you know, folks that have assumptions about why people are homeless, and, and I think this data will be really helpful in, in answering, you know, what's really going on in our community, so. Thanks again Kenny for being here, and, all right. I think we've got one more item, I think, that Consent Agenda, which is our minutes from the 5th of January.
Chair, move approval of Consent Agenda is presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And share votes aye, okay. So Kathy, did I cover it all?
I think you've gotten everything. You just need to, if you want to do a Commission call now, or ask for public comment, and then you'll be recessing rather than adjourning.
Okay, all right, so I think we'll go ahead and do a Commission call, I think I already did public comment, so, Commission call. Scott, you're unmuted?
Okay, um, I was just gonna say, obviously, last week was AOC week, so there's a lot of activity related to AOC, and the short session is coming up, as we know, so obviously there's gonna be a lot of work involved there, so. That, that's really what I've, one thing I've been working on. So obviously, there's going to be a lot of work involved there. So that, that's really what I've, one thing I've been working on.
Is there anything in particular of interest?
No, just, I mean, I, I think the bill that we just talked about with Kenny was, obviously talked about a lot. It was interesting. A lot of counties have very differing opinions on that, that activity as Commissioner Kramer mentioned, because some, some entities, you know, didn't, they really want counties to, to get all the money, for example, and be in charge of that. Versus like in our case, we have an agency, a multi-jurisdictional agency that makes more sense to do it. So it will be interesting to see. And as, as we all know, as these, originally, I thought we, we were chosen, like, yay, we're chosen. I didn't realize it was just a, a draft bill at the time. So obviously, it's a bill that is hoping to get in to the next session, I think in the short, short session. And there's going to be a lot of advocacy that will have to be done during that time because I can assure you that people will come out and have differing opinions on what should be in there and how it should be worded and everything else. So if we want to kind of keep in this position of where we potentially might get, you know, a million dollars to help with this effort, it's not going to be easy in my opinion.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Reality check, right? There's a hill to climb on this for sure. But man, it just makes sense that, you know, the, the money would go to the sub-matter experts that work in this every day and are already on the road to, you know, doing this work and, you know, helping to, you know, strategically look at the problem. So anyway, we'll see where it goes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, the AOC was, was taking care of priorities and principles, basically. And, and so more to come on all of that. Following up with our letter to Congressman Blumenhour, I've been asked to do a deeper dive with, with his staff and Senator Wyden's staff. And our planning director, Housley Glover, and administrative officer, Mr. Stone, have expressed interest in, in following up with me on a conversation with the office. And I'm going to reach out to Sheriff McGill to see if he has any interest in, in doing a deeper dive into this. And, and you know, right now, we've got, we've got 2.5 million acres of wilderness in the state of Oregon. And there's 47 wilderness areas. And, and if you do a deeper dive into this, we have 87, 2.6 million acres of wilderness study area. And this doesn't even include the watershed, the preserves, the experimental forests, the wildlife refuges, the wild and scenic rivers, the national grasslands, the national monuments. I can go on and on and on about the federal land grab that's going on right here. So just wanted to make my point clear and, and I'll, I'll be following up and I'll report back with, with what we've talked about. But I find, I find that, that this is going to shut a lot of people out of, out of a lot of ground. And I, I don't particularly care for that. The other side of the coin, I'm working really, really hard on this mental and behavioral health issue. There were six bills that were major to, to the mental and behavioral health passed in, in the session on 21. And Senate Bill 5024 pretty much lays it out as where the funding is supposed to go. Still very convoluted with inside that bill. I've asked Rep. Smith for, for a little bit more in-depth knowledge as to how all of this plays out. But there's, there's a lot of money sitting out there for mental health and behavioral health that, that at this point, for some reason, the state won't let us have any of it. So it's scheduled to be released sometime in February. I can't get an answer as to when, but I'm working on that because we have got to get those funds so that we can get them onto the ground so the providers can start helping the people that absolutely need this assistance and this help. So more to follow on that. And today Kathy and I will be taking, Kathy Clark and I will be taking my oath of office. I have been appointed by our governor to the OR SAC, which is the Oregon Recycling System Advisory Council. And I've also been appointed to the task or the Truth in Labeling Task Force. So more to follow up on the environmental issues as pertains to recycling as we move into the future. So and the last but not least, County Solutions Advisory Committee is now up and running and fully staffed with Andy Smith and colleagues from around the state. So we're moving forward with that. So with that, that's my report today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. I, congratulations, are in order for your task force appointment. Good for you. Thank you for that work. And the County Solutions is an AOC committee, correct? Yeah. Yeah, great. Okay, perfect. I don't really have a lot to report. I did attend the AOC HHS committee last week. And of interest, besides the things that you've all mentioned, is it looks like the state is going to be contracting for kind of an after-action report on the public health response to COVID. So I'll be tracking that, kind of what, what's gone well, what's not, not, not worked so well in the state of Oregon and at the local level. So I think it'll be a while before we get that, but I certainly have interest in that as well. So, okay. So anything else, commissioners?
Nothing there.
All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and recess our meeting until 2:00 PM and where we will continue and talk about the Strategic Investment Program, Community Service fee. So with that, go have lunch or whatever and I'll see you back here in your box at 2:00 PM.
Sounds good. Thanks Kathy.